Okay, welcome everyone to this Values and Ethics Subcommittee. There's no planned fire alarm today, so if the alarm does go off, please make your way through to the main entrance and meet outside the cathedral and the central library. And toilets, this is my second announcement, toilets are on either side of reception. And we'll just move on now, if that's okay, to introductions. This is Mr Wilcox. No, welcome. We'll just move on. So I'll say again, just for your benefit, um, better. Welcome to the meeting of the Values and Ethics Subcommittee. There is no planned fire alarm today, but if the alarm does go off, please make your way through the main entrance and leave the building there and gather via the cathedral or the central library outside those. Toilets are on either side of reception. And we'll move on to introductions, if that's okay. I'm Jo Williams, very pleased to be here as the new Chair of this committee. And I'll ask for a number of introductions, please.
Professor Woburn, can you please send your official jerseys? Nicholas Keats, how about your name? And for David Wilcox, what do you think?
Counselor Jonathan Haggerty, stop.
Thank you. And officers?
Alison Tayhan, you're up to the committee.
Tim O'Gara, you're the leader of Democratic Services.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do you have any points to your absence?
No, Chair, these are contenders.
Excellent, excellent. Declaration of interest, are there any declarations of interest? Okay. To the minutes of last meeting, which were in, last meeting was in October last year.
February.
Oh, I do beg your pardon, February?
February twenty five, yes.
This year? Yes, sorry. I wasn't here, so I'm going to ask for a proposal and secondaire of the accuracy of the minutes, please from those who are here. Thank you. Come in the secondaire.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Lovely, moving on swiftly then, to, I'll be forward. Welcome everyone. I'll ask you to put forward any supplementary questions that arise from the responses you've had to questions you put to us. And I'm going to start with Susan Hawtrey, please.
Can I just check that statements come afterwards then, do you think?
Yes.
Thank you. So my supplementary question one, I think we have two, don't we? Is failure to complete the register of interests properly a breach of the Code of Conduct?
Tim, can I ask you to clarify one more, please?
It's quite a hypothetical question, I suppose. I suppose the starting point to answer that question is that there is an obligation on all councillors to ensure that their registers of members' interests are kept up to date. And if there are any changes to the entries in the register, then they will advise myself or colleagues in Democratic Services within twenty eight days of becoming aware that their interests have changed. Like any matter of conduct, the likelihood of failure to register an interest will probably depend on what the nature of that interest is. And as members will be aware, there are different categories of interest that we have in our Code of Conduct that either must be registered in the case of disposable community interests, or in the case of other interests, may be registered if they are other interests. But that's often above the obligations to declare interests when they arise in a public meeting or other decision making setting. So I think in principle, a failure to disclose an interest, there are processes in place to ensure that members are aware of their obligations to update their interests. In theory, yes, that could be deemed to be a breach of the council's Code of Conduct, but depending on the nature of the interest and what the circumstances that gave rise to it not being declared, and I guess in theory that could be something that we look at as part of a complaint process. Can't receive comment on anything specific, but general principles apply to our chair.
Thank you, Tim. Um, the last question. Yeah, I think the answer was yes, yes it is. Do you have another question for us?
Yeah, and because you're new, and it's very nice to see the new chair, thank you. Welcome etcetera from public. And just a tiny bit background, I spotted that the registers of interest weren't completed properly for international travel and hospitality. And I raised it at the meeting here and was told that I needed to put in a complaint for it to be addressed. I'm not quite sure why I was told to do that, but I did. And then the relevant councillors were contacted by head of legal services and by the monitoring officer, and asked to complete the register of interests. Now, I've sent that correspondence to the councillors that are here today, because I think it's important that they see it, because I don't understand why that's described as complaint process did not proceed. It did proceed, and there was an informal resolution, as far as I'm concerned, proposed that they actually just complete their registers of interest. So now, my question is, please, will you update the summary of complaints to accurately reflect informal resolution, the actions recommended, and the date recommendations were complied with, compared?
Okay. I familiarise myself certainly with the report that we're going to see later in the meeting, of course, on the agenda. But in terms of the specific item, or are you able to comment, Tim, at this point, or do we need to provide you with an additional written response possibly to that question?
So according to our records, this wasn't something that came forward as a formal complaint on our complaints form that we issued, a decision basis in respect of, like many matters that are raised with me relating to members' interests, things can be dealt with in a way that ensures that our records are updated without there needing to be a formal complaints process to be gone through. And my recollection, I don't have the details here, but, you know, I did speak to the head of legal services last week, and that was our recollection of how this matter was dealt with. It wasn't based as a formal complaint, and therefore there's no basis on which to update the information for the committee today, and I have no intention of doing so.
Okay, it was released as a formal complaint, I was told to do that, and I did it. So I think we do need to investigate this further, Susan.
The four of us have an email in front of us that says, "Our advice to submit a formal complaint, please find a touch fee complaints form."
When was that issued, sir?
Well, we got it about ten o'clock today, and I don't think you were included.
No, but that is the issue, I think, Susan, in that your consent wasn't received within the normal deadlines, so.
No, no, sorry.
Sorry, the original amount was March twenty twenty four.
Oh, I do beg your pardon, sorry. Tim, are you saying you're not aware for that?
So I'm not familiar with it, that's probably correspondence that was sent on the head of legal, it wasn't sent by me. But if we, if I may check whether there was a formal complaint submitted in the form we wanted on our website, then if that was the case, we would have progressed it as a formal complaint. If that didn't happen, then we didn't do that.
So that's basically, we need to look into this a bit further. So I'm not going to get the answer for you today. So can we look into that and send you?
I can speak to that, the legal services, which is back to get that clarification for the committee and the Member of the public.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, to move on, Dan. Dan, please, upright, Dan Uppright, yes. Dan, do you have any additional questions, additional questions to the questions you put to us and had a response on?
I guess I've got a question from councillor Wilcox.
Councillor Wilcox, yes.
I guess the question is, why is the Green Party putting up this situation? Why haven't you done anything?
Um, I'm not sure there is a situation that we need to, that we need to look into. I will get back to you in a minute.
Okay. And it's my second supplementary, again, councillor Wilcox, would it be possible for you to reply to the solicited emails at the very least?
Um, sorry, can I, can I interject, please, councillor Wilcox, sorry? Mr Uppright, you do need to put your question through me, please.
A member of the public has sent us multiple emails to councillor Wilcox, and has not been received or replied. I was wondering if councillor Wilcox could reply to those emails.
Councillor Wilcox?
I will endeavour to, please.
Do you need any further clarification as to when the emails were sent?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Mr Uppright, any further questions?
Thank you, I want to, I want to.
Of course you have, yes, thank you for correcting it. Mr Aldrey, do you have any additional questions for us?
Yes, please, I do. My question leads on from Suzanne's. Just in context, I'd raise this last time, the last time this report was prepared, the report about complaints received down with, because last time, the head of legal services who prepared and was responsible for the report changed the format from the previous year, and I believe the reason she did that was to hide the cases, including my case, where there was significant delay in deciding that there was no case to answer. So I'm happy to provide you, Chair, with more information on that, just to give you some context of why the problem, we're all here, certainly why I'm here. So what, and I think this changing of formats is not, wouldn't be acceptable in any other manageable situation. Looking on yourselves as managers of the system, councillors and chair, you would be saying, well, I want to see like for like, I want to be able to see trends, I want to know, you know, I don't think it's chopping and changing this year. I think, I've only looked briefly this year, but it looks pretty comprehensive, although it doesn't include complaints received where they were rejected. But I think rejection is crucial, because you could be getting significant amounts of complaints that are decided effectively then, in complete secrecy, nobody knows about them, you don't know about them, the councillors don't know about them because they're not reported, and they're rejected. That was what happened with me. So my, my case was rejected by an unlawfully appointed, with an unlawfully appointed independent person, and then I feel it was an absolute disgrace. So I'm asking that, I'm asking that the head of legal services re-prepares this report for the previous year, and also to provide like for like, and also that cases that are rejected are noted, and the reasons for, you know, in a similar way to the ones that are dealt with.
The trial, yes, I read your question, and we gave you a response, and so are you saying you're not?
I'm not happy with the response, yeah.
Okay, Tim, will you come in, because I can have another thought on it, but Tim first, you?
I'm not entirely sure what the question is, Chair.
The question is, will, well, to be honest, I, yeah, I'm not satisfied with the reporting, and I would say, I would like to see like for, will you prepare, will the head of legal services prepare a report that, one, identifies all cases that were received but not accepted as valid complaints, and within reason, the actual reasons for that, and similar information as, you know, the times, dates, all of that, and then also provide that for previous year, so it's, or the previous period, reporting period, so that you've got management, you know, councillors managing this at V and E, have got actual trend information to go on. I know it's a long way to, I'm explaining it, I'm trying to say this is why you need to do it, and it should be obvious to a manager why they are doing that.
Go ahead, Tim.
So, so Chair, I may say, the report here does identify cases that have been rejected. It builds on the previous report where members asked for further information to be brought into this report, which has been done. I think I need to correct the statement that's made by the Member of the public, that councillors are not the management of this process, the process is dedicated to officers to manage, and members of this committee are here to seek assurance that effective procedures are in place, and to do so, and we've brought our policies and procedures and our Code of Conduct through this committee in recent times, and this is a further report as the committee is asked for, that sets out a summary of complaints. I don't think any more items are needed in the report, and I certainly have no intention of going back and revisiting reports that were produced by this committee a couple of years ago. I think this is, this is an iterative process, and the management information here may well look different to what it's got before, but actually it builds on it before, and management information is, does often iterate and change over time, and there's no, there's no grounds to go back and start redrafting previous reports to this committee, that wouldn't be a good use of my side or all of the committees.
Mr Aldrey, do you have any further comment?
I accept it's not the duty of members to manage the process, but they do have oversight of the process, and I'm questioning how the information provided can be helpful when trends can't be identified, and I think Mr O'Gara is totally wrong and an unhelpful understatement.
Okay, thank you for that. My understanding, just to add, is that your complaint that you referred to in your question was in twenty twenty two?
Yes.
And preceded the complaints that are in the report before us today?
I think so.
So I believe you did, yes, because these run from September twenty twenty three. I would have to support the officer in saying that you can't keep going back, I don't think, in order to provide like for like on every detail. I don't think that is practicable or realistic really in terms of good use of our people's resource. So I think I would want to just conclude this by saying that unfortunately, your question predated what is now actually an improvement in the report that we have before us. So if you don't have any further comment, I'd like to leave this spectrum there, thank you.
Thank you, I accept it's an improvement now, but things before were absolutely woeful, woeful.
Okay.
I've got a second question.
Go ahead.
Does Mr O'Gara accept that, together with Miss Nancy Robinson, the head of legal services, he failed to appoint independent persons to the complaints process, including to my complaint, in line with the relevant legislation, that's section twenty eight of the Local Government Act? Do you accept, I'm sorry, Chair, can you ask Mr O'Gara if he accepts that? That he failed to appoint persons unlawfully?
Mr O'Gara?
I'm not prepared to make any further public statement about those matters, those historic matters, Chair, they've been, they've been addressed through this committee and other forums in, in, subsequent to the timing of these law changes, so fair and fair. There's nothing further to add after that.
You did have the full response on that point, on that question, when you, when you put your question to us about Mr, Mr Aldrey.
Sorry?
You did have a response on your points about that in your question.
Yeah.
So I think we're saying, you know, there's nothing to add to that, we feel that's a full response.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let us move on then to statements, if I'm right. Mr Aldrey, I think you're first, actually, if you can, do you wish to, do you wish to read your statement?
No, because it's probably quite lengthy, I'll just say. I just wanted to, in particular, make you aware, Chair, of the history here, and how troubled that's been, and how I feel that it's fallen very far short of what the public should expect from a members' complaint process. In terms of the questions, well, the question I asked about the, and I see a pattern here of members and, with chairs particularly, and the legal team being very defensive around decisions, and constant sort of reductions, censorship of what I'm saying. And I just, you just bear with me a minute, I've got a whole paragraph here about my, my thoughts on the process that's been redacted, and I'm just puzzled as to why. And also, the references to the monitoring officer and head of legal services are redacted. Now, I'm not sure under the constitution how that's actually allowed, because I think monitoring officer is presumably at director level, so I think there's some rule about that, but perhaps that could be explored. The ombudsman wrote a report, which now head of legal is saying, she never shared that in public, it never came to this committee, even though the ombudsman had a formal requirement in there for the council to amend its processes, and the processes which, when the processes went through this committee to be amended, there was no mention of this ombudsman report, I had to bring that up. So that was kept from members, in my perception, by the head of legal services and Mr O'Gara. So I think trust is just broken down here. We're told, I'm told now that that report wasn't reported at all to the council because it doesn't involve our administration. Well, I would question, I mean, I don't know if that's true of all reports, but it's certainly a serious report as I can see it, because the council's processes were unfair, they didn't say what they were going to do, and they did something completely different. So, yeah.
So is that the paragraph in your statement?
No, no, I think, I just need to find it a minute, but I don't think it was.
But if that was the essence of it?
It's the essence of it, yeah.
Quite true, I understood.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can we have Mr Uppright's statement now, please?
I won't speak to it, but I think I have a few minutes after this meeting before the audit committee. I would like to have a chat here if, if at all possible.
Um, yes, it's just a few minutes, but we have a lot of papers and flotating, and I just need to, thank you. Okay, so Aldrey?
This is on the basis we have one minute really to speak, so I don't imagine that's true, yeah.
Sorry.
So the council's own procedures indicate that reasons will be given for decisions made about breaches of the Code of Conduct, and quite helpfully, there's a list there of potential reasons, A, B, C, D, et cetera. So the report has forty six items, nine were rejected, we don't know why. In twelve cases, the complaint process did not proceed, two of which I'm concerned about, but anyway, we don't know why the complaint process did not proceed. Twenty five say no further action, no reasons given. Four had informal resolution, only two of those actually say what the resolution was and when it was completed. And then get this conclusion that no findings of breaches of the Code of Conduct have been made. So to me, if at least four had informal resolution, there must have been four breaches to resolve, so I don't quite understand that conclusion. But I just want to say, the table is incomplete and needs to be completed. If you look at those columns that are devoid of information, and the delays in producing it, you'll see that we just didn't have anything last year, and the incompleteness suggests a lack of respect for the public, and actually, I think, for the councillors in trying to understand whether the council's procedure for dealing with complaints about breaches of the Code is actually delivered to you properly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I would just comment that we're going to be moving on to that very report that you're referring to, so I'm not going to invite any further comment on our topic at the moment. Moving forward then to item six on the agenda is the complaints report. And it's going to be sound, I'll find it. So it's a summary of complaints against councillors, and Tim, if you could please just give us a brief, a brief overview, a brief summary of the report, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I think, given the previous public forum questions and segments, I think the report doesn't need very much introduction. It provides a summary of complaints between the period September twenty twenty three and September twenty twenty five, during which time we've received a number of complaints, and the method of disposing of those complaints is set out in the summary to the report. The summary detail is slightly more detailed than has been presented to this committee previously, and I'm happy to take any general questions from members of the committee on the process or the reporting format or otherwise, but for obvious reasons, I'm not in a position to get into detail in respect of any of the specific cases in the report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Tim. I have some questions, but let us, let me start first with the members, please. Any, any questions? Question, Chair?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I've got a comment and a question, actually. Thank you, Tim, for introducing the, the report. I think that, even though it's an improvement on what we had previously, I think that it could include rather more in the way of context. So we've got four, we've got forty six complaints listed. In theory, that could be forty six complaints against one councillor, or it could be one complaint against forty six councillors. So I think it would be useful to sort of perhaps know how many, how many councillors were the subject of complaints, and even perhaps how many people made the complaints. So I think it would be, I think, I think there's scope for some additional context as far as the report is concerned. And I've got a question on the column which says confidentiality, yes or no. Obviously, in all cases, it's confidential as far as councillor is concerned, you know, that councillor's identity isn't revealed, and I think it might be so, but I just wondered what that column was actually telling us, because in some cases, the box is ticked, but, you know, it's not.
Okay. Tim, perhaps you could answer the second question first?
Sure.
About these here?
I could probably answer the first question, which we could certainly look to provide some of that contextual information in terms of the total number of councillors that have been the subject of a complaint, and any individual members of the public and or councillors, because some of it is councillors, I think, have made, have made complaints. In terms of, in terms of the specific column that's highlighted as confidentiality, yes or no, as part of our procedure, we, we give complaints the ability to say whether or not they want their personal details to be treated in a confidential way, and for their anonymity to be preserved as part of the complaint. And if you look at the summary against each of those complaints, the first one relates to an allegation relating to bullying, the next is about discrimination messaging on social media, the next one is about behaviour that was allegedly racist. So given the subject matter of those, those particular complaints, we would have treated those more sensitively and preserve the anonymity of the individual in question as part of the complaints process.
Okay, councillor Haggerty?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question or comments? Has someone got a last?
Yeah, I'd like to make some comments about the presentation of the report. It would be really useful if the header row was actually repeated across all three pages, and I can keep scrolling back. And also, the last.
That should be an easy one.
Yeah, it should be a really easy one. The last but three complaints, which I think, uh, August, no, Sep, no, September twenty twenty five. I think, uh, August, no, Sep- no, September twenty twenty-five, um, I don't believe that the, scrolling back, the first page, the summary of complaint is actually fully displayed there, can we have some idea about what those complaints were about, please?
Tim, do you have any information on those filed free, uh, the filed free of the report after you have been?
Um, and also, I think one on the eighth as well, so the formatting seems to have gone a little bit wide on that, um, that, that column, that column hasn't it? Um, we can, we can provide a kind of protection after the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
I think it possibly relates to the two eight of the last four. Yeah, it should work. And the one on the eighth, we don't have any questions, so, that's one. Sorry, I haven't got one for each one? The one on the eighth, the eighth, twenty-five. Okay, yeah.
You clear about that question, then, are you, please? I'm not.
Yeah, there's, there's one on the eighth, the eighth.
Yes.
Um, four of those from the bottom, ten, four, nine, and so the perls on the right, ten, four, nine as well, there's three lines, isn't there?
And we're saying that one of the columns isn't...
I think the formatting just has, just has squashed the, 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 the last words in the, in the column, it's not, it's not... I'm just unclear what, what those last words are.
Okay, that, that, that should be hopefully a fairly easy item to, uh, correct. Um, any other comments or questions? Councilor over.
Um, I'm, I'm basically happy with the content of the, the report, agreeing to this, uh, conversation, so absolutely, I just wanted to make a comment in the way I think the most pertinent thing is that we've forgotten to do the report altogether, and it, it, it is important that the summary comes to this committee every year, so I guess the question is, has, has the council done anything to make sure we remember each, uh, meeting that we will bring back?
So I think we did, we, we did remember and we agreed with the committee that we were bringing the report now from the, um, as, and the coins in, 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 in itself, so, um, it's not an excuse, but we've had a change of chair, um, we've also had, um, you know, various, um, various, various other, um, challenges around, um, resourcing, so it, it, it's, it's not, you know, it's not, it's not only that we should come every year, but it, it does, it does sound a bit, I haven't realised it yet, it's, it's, it's in attraction.
That's nice, Tim. Um, I mean, I think what we can work with as well is having, um, uh, a, a work programme for us as a committee, so we know, you know, the meetings are scheduled, the items that are going to be allowed gender are scheduled, and, you know, it is very straightforward, so it shouldn't be difficult for us to come up with that, um, you know, i- into the future and then the, we won't be forgetting, no one will be forgetting.
Okay, good.
Um, I, I can, sorry, go ahead, what, do, beg your pardon, Councilor Coombs, go ahead.
Well, one last statement, so if you want to finish your questions then.
No, no, go ahead.
Okay, so, looking at the report then, I'm, I'm wondering why we've got it, and what's the purpose of this meeting, what's our objective, and if, as a, a subset of the Audit Committee, audit is generally about assurance, and we're looking at the complaints process against councillors, so are we here to assure that the complaints process works correctly, or are we assuring that councillors act in accordance with values, ethics, code of conduct? Um, but I don't think this report is helping me with any of those things, but if we were clearer about what it was trying to do, that we could maybe shape this recurring agenda to give us the opportunity for assurance. So if we were asking ourselves, is the complaints process working? Logical question for the Audit Committee, then I think I'd mind to hear from the independent persons that administer the complaints process to find out a little bit about their way of thinking and how they address the questions in front of them, or perhaps if they perhaps reasonably prefer to stay behind the scenes, they could give a little more of a report on the decisions that they make and why, um, early complaints are being accepted, rejected, or whether the assessment has resulted in further action or not. And all we've got in front of us are just raw numbers, which says that in the last two years, there have been forty-five complaints made against Bristol councillors and none have been upheld, so we might then want to benchmark that based on our authorities, is that normal? Is it the case that elected members in Bristol are especially virtuous and the members of the public are unusually suspicious? Because it may be the other way around, that we have a, a very virtuous public who are making complaints against who they consider to be suspicious councillors and our process is therefore not working if it has not found that any of these complaints are justified. Just looking at raw numbers, it seems odd that there have been so many complaints made that none of them are considered to be, to be justified or against the code of conduct. Coming at it the other way, if we are not to assure that elected members are following the code of conduct and looking at the, the values and ethics, then perhaps we would like to know more about consistent themes in our way, so at least there, are there particular issues that come up again and again, so that then we can try and improve by focusing, concentrating on a particular topic or by changing our procedures so that these issues don't come up so many times. So that, I guess is my challenge to, to other members and officers, is what we're trying to, to do with this report.
Thank you, Councilor Coombs, yes, a number of thoughts came to my mind there when you were speaking about those things, I mean, I, I see what you're saying and it's a very good position to put to us, um, is that we need really a, a bigger picture, we, we need a fuller picture here regarding the code of conduct observed, um, by members of the authority. So again, you know, we, we can, I, I think anyway, Chair, we, we can work with that, this is, this is detailed really, this item, um, and perhaps what we need, as you say, is a bigger picture, more rounded, um, a more rounded report of, on a manual basis, of the, 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 the wider subject, um, and I can, I'm certainly happy to, to work towards that, uh, and so therefore to make it more meaningful and to make it less just, as you say, numbers, although one point I would make quickly, and then I'm going to ask Tim to comment here, in terms of what's feasible, um, I don't think we should overlook the fact that this isn't just about numbers, that there's a lot of, there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes here, also, don't forget, we've got two years here, we've got forty-six complaints, might seem quite a lot, but I mean, roughly on average, that's twenty-three a year, so it's less in terms of the numbers and it's deeper maybe than is apparent on the, on the report itself, you know, we have, we have columns, we have yes, no's, and we have very brief perhaps explanations for things, but I don't think that should, um, I think that should, um, that shouldn't, you know, um, make us think that there's very little, too, little substance to this, I think there probably is a lot of substance, and your point about the independent persons having a role to play in terms of giving, giving the full, that fuller picture is a very good one also. But, um, Tim, can I ask you to comment on, um, what, what, on the council has said there?
Just a couple of things, um, just if I can pick up the trend a bit first, Councilor Coombs, um, if you, if you're just looking at the summary of complaints in here, um, in, in the paper today, two things have jumped out at me and, and these won't be, um, unfamiliar to councillors, is one, the, the, the aggressive behaviour in council meetings and, and other horrible meetings, um, and the second is, um, comments on social media, and those, those are two areas that where, where, you know, given, given the, um, you know, the, the, the nature of debate in some council meetings and the way in which, um, yes, th- those meetings conduct themselves, that, that, that they can be very challenging environments, as, uh, you know, we, we, I only refer us to the, the last meeting before council, for instance, and the way in which, you know, that there was clearly heightened tensions in that meeting, you know, the way the members of, um, this, this, the council conduct themselves in those forums is, is, is under a, um, close scrutiny, and, and then also social media and, you know, I, I'm, I'm not the social media police, um, but, you know, a lot, a lot of complaints that we receive will come, will come via, you know, with, 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 with trends relating to things that have been done or said or not done on social media, and the, 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 the way in which councillors engage with social media and engage members of the public through social media, um, is, 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 is an, is an area, uh, again, for, 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 for increased scrutiny of councillors, and I guess the reason I highlight those two things is because when you look at, when you look at our, um, terms of reference for this subcommittee, you know, um, promoting the highest standards of behaviour and providing guidance to, 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 to councillors generally is a function of this committee and how this committee enables, um, and champions that good practice in how, you know, members behave at meetings or how they conduct themselves on social media, um, is, is, is one way in which this committee could meaningfully discharge its duties in, you know, in, in a way that would, um, add to, you know, the, the, the routine review of, um, codes of conduct and processes and, and information, items like this, that, that would be a, you know, a, a good place to start, Chair, I would say, in terms of all my program, if, if that's, um, if, if, if the committee's minded to do that.
Thank you. From your, from what you've just said though, I think that, coming back to your point about what's the purpose, you know, um, it sounds to me as if we could have easily written quite a, a long introduction into this report, painting that bigger picture, painting the purpose of it and where it fits and where it sits in terms of our role as a committee here, uh, as us Tim has just outlined, so, um, I think that's, uh, to me, that does help, um, clarify for us the purpose, do you agree, Councilor?
Yes, I do, because that would give the context that allows us to consider this my second question about what are the issues which are raised regarding council of conduct that we can then do something about or congratulate ourselves on. On the, the first part, um, the ensuring of the process, I, I think retaining the table is, is important, that interestingly, it seems like it's not necessarily us that assure the process, but by the addition of the case reference in the right-hand column, then the people that have made the complaint can look up their case and see if it has been summarised appropriately, that's probably not how it's supposed to be assured, but they have the information on it that, that we don't, and putting it into the public doesn't allow that limited level of public assurance, so there, there is a degree of that, that we also need to consider how, how we reassure ourselves on process.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the report? Members? Okay. Thank you very much, um, I think that concludes, uh, that concludes our agenda, and, um, unless there are any other comments or questions, I'd currently leave you closed. Thank you, thank you all very much for your time.